One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call. Supervisor Turner?
Here.
Corr. Stroud is here. Treasurer Boacham?
Here.
Trustee Howard?
Here.
And that's all I have. Anybody else have anything?
No. I'll make a motion to accept approval of the agenda.
Right.
Move by Boacham, second by Pinkowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First citizens time. Nobody? Approval of the November tenth, twenty twenty five minutes?
I didn't see anything wrong.
I looked at the moment. Yep. Anybody else?
I did not see anything wrong. I'll make a motion to accept the approval of the November tenth, twenty twenty five minutes.
I'll second that. Boacham, second by Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Supervisor's report. This is November, December, because I wasn't here last month. Still working with Blackwater and a quote for Zoom information. They're scheduled to come December, I think it's nineteenth. Nineteenth to put our cabinet in, so hopefully he'll have some information for me then. I did meet with my little township and she sent me an email on what they are currently using. So I've got their camera and their microphone system that they use and then they just bought a TV and a laptop. So I'm putting that all together. Clean up went well. Seemed like it was a lot slower than usual, so I guess that's a good thing. Township's getting cleaned out. I think we should probably consider maybe just doing one a year, the spring cleanup, because the fall just didn't seem to have a whole lot.
Last few years, the fall really has.
It's getting lower and lower. I want to thank everybody that came out and helped. We had the work program from the Sheriff's Department here. They were a big help. Everybody was at school.
Mm-hmm.
Worked up. It worked out good. And also on Facebook, there was some stuff about the grants that the citizens worried that it was coming out of tax money. Because I just want to clarify to the residents that the grants that I get are from several different places, nonprofit organizations and the federal government or private businesses. It's no tax dollar money at all.
Only one.
Which one?
Only one, didn't you say? Only one that we have to use or that we use taxpayer. All the rest of them are... Oh, all of them?
No.
Perfect. All of them.
There was federal rent monies.
I would necessarily say that it's not tax money. Not local tax money.
Not local tax money. That's what it is, is by saying it's not taxpayer money when it's federal, maybe. However, a lot of them like the...
Most of them are private.
Private. Correct. It's not local.
Yeah.
Taxpayer money.
So, and also we got the grant for the park.
Woo!
The design meeting will be February twenty sixth. Anybody that wants to come to help with the design, it will be children, adults. I'm going to meet with the partisan committee so that we can get different groups together to do what? February twenty sixth.
Okay.
And the build dates are May twenty eighth, twenty ninth, and thirtieth. It's a three-day build. Like I said, it's a community project. We meet volunteers. Greater Mylan Area Foundation is going to be helping with getting volunteers too. We have to provide our own tools, so we're looking for people that can't...
May twenty eighth, twenty ninth, thirtieth?
Yep. Are the build dates?
Are the build dates. So we'll put it together.
So February...
February twenty sixth is the design meeting. That's where the kids can just, you know, say what they'd like to have and the adults can put their input in on it. That's going to be like an all-day thing. The kids don't have to be here all day, but it's going to be broken sections. It'll be a kid's section, it'll be adult's section, there'll be a walk the ground section that I have to do. But it's kind of an all-day thing. But the build dates are all day. May twenty eighth is the delivery and they have to be, everything has to be sorted.
So the twenty sixth of February is Monday?
That's the design meeting day.
Yeah. We were saying like kids and stuff will be at school.
They're going to do it after five.
Oh, okay.
It's an evening.
Yep.
My part during the day, I have to do like the walk through and that kind of stuff.
And then the kids and the adults will be after five.
Yeah, it's only about an hour, hour and a half for each. So it shouldn't be that.
Also...
Kids are going to go first. And then May twenty eighth, twenty ninth, and thirtieth is the build days.
It's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Right. I tried to get weekend because I figured more people.
Yeah, that's why I was just wondering if they're going to be really slow on the twenty eighth, twenty ninth because it's work days.
I'm hoping to get the Greater Mylan Area Foundation is working with the youth groups. Like football teams, swim teams.
Put the swim team on the boy scout.
Yep.
Would they be able to do that with school?
I don't know. Probably they don't have to be on Monday.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's, then we'll do it any other.
Then we'll... Oh, no others?
No. It's going to be on Saturday. Saturday will be all right, but Thursday's...
Yeah, Saturday you can see if they have a big day.
That's the main day because that's when everything's going to be finished building. Twenty eighth is mainly just delivery and sorting. Twenty ninth will start putting some stuff together. Most of it will be on Saturday. I'll double check to confirm those dates, but that's, that's the dates that she gave me. She doesn't think there's going to be any issues, so I'll double check on that. We got a five hundred ton three stone of the parking lot cemetery. According to the quote from last month, it says about thirty, forty ton. So the rest of it, I'm going to have them put on roads where it's needed. Michigan bead, final thing for the internet. And the beginning of the barbing round, so it's still at the state level.
What was it?
Oops, internet, Michigan bead it's called. We're still waiting on the final proposals and stuff that they submitted, so we're still waiting on that. Waiting on auditors to finish last year's audit so I can get this year's budget started. I can't start my budget until I get the numbers from last year. We potentially got it scheduled for Monday, so hopefully we can get that done within a week or so. And that's all I have.
I made a motion to accept this... Sorry. Supervisor's report?
I'll second.
Move by Boacham, second by Stroud. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Treasurer's report.
Okay, for one, I would like to let everyone know that tax bills went out on Monday, the first, Tuesday, the second, and Thursday, the fourth, Tuesday, the fourth. The final ones went out Tuesday, the fourth. We had a snafu slash blip slash whatever you want to call it for the Mylan School District only. That's why Mylans will get their bills a little later. The reason why residents with mortgage companies got a bill is because they were printed out already and I just did not want to throw them away to waste the paper. So I mailed them out, so you guys could get the newsletter along with it. If you want a tax bill, that's all you have to do is call me and let me know and I will send you a tax bill for your records. But other than that, all of Mylan School District that have mortgage companies received their actual bill. It does not mean that your bill did not go to your mortgage company. All of your mortgage companies received your bills last Thursday. This is just for your records and your information for you to keep. I understand that nobody has received them in the past, but again, like I said, we had printed them out and I didn't just want to throw them away, so I mailed them.
I left it in.
I'm sorry?
I left it in.
Well, you know, and you know what? Teresa and I talked about it. We've been trying to save on postage and paper and whatnot because not a lot of people call and ask for their bills that have a mortgage company. So we have just decided not to send them. In the past, if, again, like I said, if you want a copy of your bill and the newsletter, go ahead and call me. I will be glad to send you one. I've got a couple people hit me up on the London Township Residents Only page that would like their bill. That's fine. I will send them the bill and their newsletter. But the newsletter is on our website, correct? Not yet. Okay. It's not on our website yet, but it will be. And I believe Dawn is also posting it on the London Township Residents page. So everyone that is connected with that will be able to access that. If not, if you'd like to send me, if you would like me to send you an actual hard copy, just give me a call and I will. Our credit card, Stripe, payment... What do you call it?
Machine?
Machine? Machine? Yeah. Is working actually very well. It is only the eighth of December. We've already received eight credit card payments. So people are really using that to their advantage, which we appreciate. And if it's easier for you, it's great for us. And they're also using it for the building department quite a bit. So it's actually worth its money. Other than that, tax bills, summer and winter, are due February seventeenth of twenty twenty six, which is the last day for winter to not have any interest. We can also accept payments from the seventeenth until the twenty eighth. There will be extra interest and penalties on there, but we are still able to accept payments for summer and winter up until February twenty eighth of twenty twenty six. Other than that, that's all I have.
Make a motion to accept the supervisor or treasurer's report?
I'll second that.
Move by Pinkowski, second by Howard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Corr's report?
I honestly don't have anything.
Building department. Looks like we had a total of... Looks like we have three building permits for a total of five hundred and fifteen dollars and one mechanical permit totaling one hundred and ten dollars. I'll make a motion to approve the building department report. Second? Move by Turner, second by Boacham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Assessors' report. Entering sales via recorded documents and PTA's, approval and denial of exemptions, responding daily to residents' requests, actively evaluating the status of building permits, collaboration with building zoning and B S name to improve current procedure for the most effective and permissible management of business, updating forms, conducting inspections and reconciliation of site visits, processing splits and combinations, end-of-year wrap-up, sales study, and personal property canvassing.
I'll make a motion to accept the assessors' report.
Right.
Move by Boacham, second by Pinkowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Z A report. Attempted a final court ordered cleanup of grants road, remove ninety cubic yards of trash, seventy-five yards of scrap metal, sixty yards of tires, and three unregistered and operable vehicles. Currently working with a towing company in Monroe County Sheriff's Department to remove a truck cab since placed on the road right of way by the owner and also requested M S D S issue a ticket for the right of way obstruction if possible. Worked with P C to submit publication drafts of extraction upon hall routes ordinance amendments for board adoption and working on staying for a proposed shipping container method. Also began researching the data center ordinance and discussing the same with P C members. Continue to monitor dragway burn removal site to ensure no material was pulled away in the absence of a road commission haul route. No violation found as of this writing. Working with new operators of the motocross track at the Monah Dragway Township Attorney to ensure ordinance compliance for the new season. As of this report, have secured four court ordered cleanup orders on blighted properties with four more in progress with the attorney now and preparing to submit two to four more to be submitted by the end of the month based on order compliance. Also currently working with the owners of two more properties on demolitions of their dilapidated structures. Continue to work on Z B A barn setback variance hearing for a resident and a possible expansion of the commercial quarry site. Court cases, large extraction plank at Oki. Complaints against the township closed, but Z A and P C co-chair subpoenaed to testify in March. Blight case Ronnie Rowe, court ordered cleanup issued and quotes submitted for approval. Blight case Darling Rowe, the owner has resumed correcting, but Z A obtained a court cleanup order and is collecting quotes in case the owner fails to comply as he had previously. Unpermitted barn Tittle Hill, the owner has until February twentieth to remove the structure, after which a warrant for the township to remove would be granted. Z A getting quotes. Unpermitted barn Borso, owner counters two, but so township attorneys filed for summary disposition with Z A disposition pending. Unpermitted barn Ostander, township's attorneys are seeking summary disposition on remaining owner counter claims and a court ordered abatement of the structure with discovery and depositions from the current and former London. Z A pending. Recent blight refers for court ordered cleanups on Snell and Meyer and two separate towns and roads. Attorney awaiting owner's response. Deadlines on December twenty first for Snell and...
That's supposed to be Meyer.
Meyer, yeah. Roads and preparing complaints and Z A affidavit reviews of both towns and roads. Now with all filings expected by early January. Please contact with any questions. Thank you, Mike Novello.
I'll make a motion to accept the zoning administrators' report.
I'll second that.
Move by Boacham, second by Howard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. P C report. Nothing to disbursements.
Okay.
Just, can we speak...
Sure.
Citizen has reported that we wanted to do a, an ordinance for the data centers. Has, has the data, has anybody from the data center contacted the township?
They contacted me probably...
I don't know.
At least six months ago, maybe somewhere in there.
Asking for it.
They did say that they were looking in the areas and trying to get the farmers to get land and I haven't heard nothing more.
Okay.
Um, last night, they were looking at the new township.
Yeah, because that's kind of like solo whenever they brought the same to many ordinance. They were here every single, or every planning commission meeting and I was just wondering if that was the same.
Actually, they just posted on Facebook the Dundee Township site on where they're going.
I know there's one going in Slane, I think York.
York.
Yeah.
Augusta.
Yeah, they haven't approached me anymore, so...
Okay, that's all I was asking.
I, I honestly think they can't find any farmers that want to sell in this area.
I would not doubt it.
I think that's the biggest, the biggest thing.
Nope.
Anything else, Dan?
That was it.
Okay. I'll think to disbursements.
Okay, so for the regular monthly disbursements, the total goals is sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-five cents with payroll.
Will you repeat that because I don't have that amount?
Oh.
No, I have sixteen, three thirty, eight sixty-four.
But there was, A's hardware was missed.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy-one, sixty-five.
Okay.
With payroll, it was twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and nine cents, which brings the total disbursements of the general fund to thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. With, uh, there was, uh, the road fund was thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Fire.
I, I apologize.
There was no road, right?
No, we had no road.
Okay.
And there's actually nothing in sewer either. But so the, uh, fire. So fire was thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. So total disbursements was seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
I have a question. What is versapro?
Versapro is the one that's like the cleanup on grants.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yep.
So that'll go on the tax bill.
Correct.
Uh, that has actually already been applied to the tax bill.
Okay.
The first nine thousand was applied and before I mailed them out, the, um, the second seventy-five hundred, so I applied sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars to the residence tax bill.
Okay.
Blight or tax bill.
Blight or tax bill, okay.
And also with fire tech, how are we doing on the Ag ESCO account? Do we need to send out a new bill for that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, let's get that out then. Because I know we take it from their...
Yep.
ESCO account. So do you want to check that out?
Yep.
To make sure we have enough.
It was a fire that, uh, we had the regular L M R. However, I was shorting it. I was using last year's bill, so there's a little added on to that by a hundred and eight dollars, I think, a month for four months. But also the Mylan Fire Department was, is the second quarterly, um, payment. So that's why that was twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve disbursements from the general fund in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-two, seventy-four.
Second.
Move by Turner, second by Pinkowski. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Corr. Stroud, yes? Treasurer Boacham?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Pinkowski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Nothing on the sewer fund. I'll make a motion to approve disbursements from the fire fund in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Okay.
Move by Turner, second by Boacham. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Corr. Stroud, yes? Treasurer Boacham?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Pinkowski?
Yes.
Nothing on the road fund, so total monthly expenses is seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
Unfinished business wage resolution final draft. I think I've got it right. You guys want something with the P C chair change, so I changed it. I don't see anything else. I make a motion to accept it.
Well, if you corrected on it, I know the P C chair...
Right here, the P C chair and the P C recording secretary.
You guys want it separated?
I'll make a motion to accept the latest and last weighted resolution final draft.
I'll second that.
Move by Boacham, second by Howard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article twelve.
It's money, so we have to do it.
Oh.
Um, do you want to put the resolution number in there, your motion?
Oh, she put the money in there.
You want to put the resolution number in there?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, I will make a motion to accept the wage re, wage resolution final draft, resolution number zero eight, zero eight, two-two dash one.
We shouldn't have to do a roll call because we're going to approve those wages.
Okay, so I'm open here.
Article twelve, Pinkowski, you want this?
Yes. The, uh, uh... I would like to see to have a change that anything like that the P C does that comes back to the board to have final approval. It's just happened that, that was not the last P C, but being the one before, they had a meeting with stuff that was, you know, confusing of what was going on getting everything, you know, with, you know, allowing with contingency, you know. We don't know if it ends up getting, people get permits, any contractor or anything, dragway, dirt bike track of, you know, moving forward, so.
So you want, um, all permits?
Yeah.
Every building permit?
Huh?
Every building permit that's doing zoning?
No, no, no. It would be like site plans.
That, so somebody goes to build a house and has a site plan?
No, the woods goes in front of planning commission.
So...
Mostly special uses, I think, goes in front of planning commission.
So my, my, well, the reason why, why does the building department, why don't, why don't those have to come to the, to the planning commission?
You know what?
Because we have a licensed building for shoulder and sponsor.
So, but he goes by the ordinance because he has to go to the site plan, which goes to the zoning administrator. We don't oversee that, so should we oversee theirs?
Well, this is my issue. The, not the last one because you guys canceled, but the one before that, that he's speaking of. The supervisor sent emails to all of the planning commission asking them to not agree on things with contingencies.
That's correct.
Correct. Well, you gave a resident his...
Not true.
Approval.
That's not true.
You did.
No.
You gave a resident his approval, but as of today, he still has not received his approval.
Yeah, it's fine, then it's not approved. Two different things that I guess nobody's caught on to. I've went over this over and over and over. Like so many times, I can't even hardly speak about it. But what happened was the dragway pulled the permit. Not the contractor that you guys are complaining about. The dragway pulled the zoning permit. It was approved, stamped, approved. It was already done. So he's got a pile of dirt and the only way to get the dirt off the property is to get the special use, which is the haul route. There was nothing contingent on it. They already had, he already had the permit to do it. He already had dirt sitting there. So the only thing that he needed to do was get the dirt off the property. So yes, we did it on contingent on that because at the end of the day, we're not in charge of the roads anyway. So it still doesn't matter what we do, other than having him come back. Whenever, if the road says he, the road commission says he can do it. We can't say, oh, no, you can't do it if the road commission says you can. So there was no contingency on this at all.
My question is, is, I'm not referring to that. Your, your category that is one of that. I'm talking about all of that stuff.
Okay.
So what means you get all excited about this one event? I'm talking about everything. What you just talked about. You're using that as an example.
No.
I'm using, I'm using, yeah, you did.
No, I did and you responded.
Okay, but I'm going with everything. I, it's not one contractor, it's not one dragway, it isn't one raceway.
This is the deal.
Everywhere.
To me, it doesn't matter, right? I'm not...
It seems like it is, because you're getting excited.
No, this is just common sense. If you, if you have rules in place, if you, if you have an ordinance, if you don't like the way the ordinance is written, we're the ones that approve the ordinances. Now, so, now listen. So if you're going to do a pond, an extraction, right? You have to first, A, go get your own engineer, if you're going to do an extraction, a lake, right? You've got to go get your own engineer, right? Which also has to read the ordinance. So he has to make sure that he follows the ordinance first. Then it has to go to the zoning administrator, which he has to make sure it's followed second. Then it has to go to the township engineer to make sure it's followed third. Then it has to come to the planning commission, which is the fourth one. Then you have a public hearing, which if they don't even agree on the ordinance, they have their own way and we could sway against it as a planning commission. Then you got, then you're wanting to have a fifth line of a defense. When we already have all these things in place, all these checks and balances all the way down the road, then you're going to have people come here in front of the board and then we're going to go all the way back over, start back over, this is going to be dragged on. We already can't even get out of here half the time till nine or 10 o'clock at night. Then you're going to have people here and this is going to get sent back to us. We're going to come back here, it's going to be something else. And it just, at the end of the day, it's just going to be dragged on and on. But, and then also, by law, you only have thirty days from a public hearing to approve or deny somebody's permit. So when it comes to us, if, we, we can delay it, but you only have thirty days from when that public hearing starts. You have thirty days. So that means when it comes back here, then what? We're going to keep having special meetings? Is that what you guys think?
Well, this is my, this is, let me clarify some things for you guys. Legally, we cannot demand a haul route. There's an attorney general opinion.
Exactly.
We cannot demand a haul route. But we can ask and hopefully, so far, we've been lucky with them getting them. But even Bonnie said, we, the road commission issues the haul routes if, like she said, roads are made to travel. It's not up to the township to, to say that, hey, we, we have and it's, it's worked. But if anybody wanted to challenge it, we would probably lose. Because we cannot legally demand a haul route. But this is my opinion on this article twelve. If our zoning administrator would not send stuff to you guys without everything that is needed, we wouldn't have this problem.
Bingo. Because that is the, that's, let's, let's put it like that.
That's where the problem is.
Yep.
The zoning admin, and I told him, do not even accept an application unless you have everything. Period. If you take that application, you've got to start that process.
Yeah, I mean, I understand, and that's where, that's where...
No, but because he sent you that information without being...
These are two different contractors.
But he sent you that application without being finished and that was, that's what drug is in the court.
Well, the thing is though that...
But then the attorney general turns around and says, we don't have to ask for one. But yet, how do we get in trouble in court because we didn't have one?
We may get in trouble, we won.[1773.25]
Well, but the only reason why we did is because we created one.
No, we didn't create one.
We had the planning commission create one for him.
Well, it doesn't matter, like, 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 the roads, we had, we had.
See, and even with the, and even with this one that he's doing, uh, at the dragway, we still have to come up with a resolution.
Yeah, but it's.
For that, for that haul route, and it, it doesn't make sense to me.
Right.
The road commission is wanting a resolution for that haul route, saying that we demand that we want one, and I'm not gonna do that because I don't need one, I, I can't. And, and the road commission, that's what's holding it up, they want a resolution from us, just like we did with that other one.
Yep.
And that's how we got it to court, because we did do a resolution saying that, you know, we have, and if I do do a resolution, it's gonna stay in there. This is only procedure, it's not that we are demanding you don't have a haul route because we can't.
Yeah, but the, so, the planning commission, we didn't just approve it, well, for one, you can't do anything, right? So, it was approved on being contingent with, not with us in general as a township, with the road commission. Now, if they have an issue and has to come back to us, that's fine, that's, that's the whole reason why it's contingent. We didn't just say, oh, you're approved to do it, so to me, it means another.
See, and I'm okay, I, I.
So you see what I mean, in this, it's a reason.
But, listen, Darryl, I, I don't agree with contingency, I would agree with it if we had a zoning administrator that would follow through with, make sure that.
Well, I mean, you can't blame the, you can't blame the township.
I don't blame them, you see, I'm, I'm putting it where it belongs.
I, I'm not blaming the thing, I'm saying is, the board should have final approval, we are the elective body of this township, okay? So if we look through everything and says, this is what I'm going to do to my office, okay? And I look through everything, you've got this check, this check, this check, this check, this check.
We can do that, we can add it right into it too, if you want.
Thank.
But see, my question is this, Mike, what happens if, if we put it on the agenda and you don't see that happening until the night of the meeting, are you gonna table it for another month?
You can't legally, in the pond, I already looked it up, you have thirty days in that public hearing to approve it or deny it, that's it, thirty days.
And that's the thing is, is that, now, the thing is.
We have a special meeting all the time, so what's gonna happen?
The thing is, is, you know, if, the, the fact is, is, if, uh, like we said, that agenda needs to be done on Thursday by close of business, okay? And if we can get it for that weekend to have it, that's fine, if I don't pick it up, or somebody doesn't pick it up, that is.
That's on you.
Now, my question is, now, what's my question?
Okay, that is on your person for not being able to do your due diligence, that falls on you.
So, so when it comes to, comes to the board.
Why are you so a- all excited about?
Because this is frustrating, because we're already gonna, we're, because you don't understand all, everything that we're gonna have to go through all the time, and all the residents that are here.
No, 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 it isn't, it isn't a public hearing, the residents sitting there are gonna sit there, okay? And, and, and the thing is, is they can sit there, in our, our public hearing, our, uh, agenda.
Okay. If you guys wanna do it, I'm not even gonna argue about it, I don't really care, at the end of the day, it's gonna pass, or, or it's gonna go to court and pass if it says it can be done. So if you guys wanna do it, and waste more time, and waste our time and the township's money and time, go ahead, if the ordinance says they can do it, it's going to happen, okay? So if the planning commission approves it, or the board approves it, either way, if, if, if all means, if you're telling me that if.
Making sure all documentation is in place before that permit is issued.
Well, what's the difference with the PC?
Yeah, it's the same people, we're even.
It's contingent, so, until.
It's still the same.
So what are we gonna do, approve it on contingent too?
No, until.
You're gonna have to.
You, you, you don't have all your people working.
It don't have, you have thirty days.
So you should not even go to the PC without, that's what I'm saying, without, that's where the problem is.
Yes, now, I agree with that. Yes, I do agree with that.
I mean, I don't, this, this has a good point, and not with this, I was reading through this, I noticed tonight, there is no longer a county planning commission review, so this, this would have to be changed, but, um. The problem isn't with the PC, the problem isn't, it's, it's with our zoning, it should not even go to you guys unless everything is in place, and that's where the problem is.
And then, and then we get into a, into a situation, cause, I mean, legally, you can't just keep delaying some of this permit, especially if it's our fault that it even happened.
Like, that's what I'm saying, one thing, that's that.
Like, 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 even that one, the, the permit process started like six months before it even got to us. So if we just keep delaying something, okay, we're gonna make you come back, even though, like, we just had a public hearing, you only have thirty days, so.
You shouldn't have even took it.
Well, no, that's what I mean, but, but you gotta think, in our, in our situation at that time, you really don't have, your hands are kinda tied. Now, I agree with you, you should have information, right, but now, if it, if the same thing happens from, from us to here, well, then we're still in the same situation, you're gonna have to approve it on contingent, or deny it. And you better have a pretty good reason to deny it if the ordinance says you can do it, so you're kinda, you're kinda in a bind, either way you look at it.
But this is what I direct the zoning administrator, nothing goes to you guys' public hearing.
I agree.
And, and you don't take an application unless you have everything, and if I find out that you do that again, then this board's gonna have to do something with the zoning administrator, because we cannot continue like this. He has to make sure, and, and don't even take the application, I gave, I gave him a checklist, but that's my thing.
Well, the thing is. This is the, it has to be before the public hearing, we have a public hearing, you can look up the law, you legit from the public hearing, you have thirty days.
That's my excuse, but don't you guys, that's, but that's.
Truth, so we're stuck, right, because.
But that's what she's saying, and my point is, is if she's over the planning commission board, which she is, and she emails you guys and says, don't do it, and you do it anyway.
No, 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 that was more referring to ordinances, and if you guys wanted to lay an ordinance for a year, no.
But it was referring to that exact case.
I will not, I will not do that, not on somebody's permit, whenever they came there as a public hearing, no way, they paid for a public hearing, and by law, you have thirty days, no way. Now, if you're talking about an ordinance, and you guys, now, if it messed up when it got to us like in that situation, no, I agree with what we did. Now, if it's an ordinance, where we have all kinds of time to fix things, adjust things, that's fine, we could, we could table this thing like we did with the, the, the solar for three years, I don't care, that's fine, I agree with you. But when you've got somebody's permit that comes in, has been waiting six months, and then you can't even blame necessarily the contractor that was there, because another contractor started the permit, he's in the middle of the permit. And like, and it's getting close to winter time to be able to try to figure it out, like, we're, we just had a public hearing, it should never got to us, I agreed to you with that.
And when I was emailing him, I was not aware of this attorney general opinion that I cracked.
But you see what I mean, though, but certain things I do agree with, ninety-nine percent of the time, yes, I agree, we should, but like, you can't necessarily hold up contractors, cause otherwise it's gonna cause lawsuits, because you, if you're in the middle of something, and, and it's on our fault, that was our fault. Why, why should that guy be punished, or those contracts be punished, when it wasn't their fault, you see what I mean, they should never got to the public hearing.
Well, should not have.
You see what I mean, but why, why is it their fault?
Understood, but, but a- a- at the end of the, at the end of the conversation, he still has not gotten his haul route. And you guys have already canceled a second complaining commission meeting after that.
And it doesn't matter, though, because at the end of the day, we protected ourselves as a township, because we have a contingent on it, that thirty days doesn't matter to us, cause we approved it being contingent. So we approved it within the thirty days like it says, and now it's contingent, so now it's, it's, if, if they wanna sue, do whatever, say, any kind of wrongful or downtime or whatever, it's gonna be on road commission. Because we done, you know, we, we did our part, it came to us, we did the best we could for what we had in front of us.
See, and the road commission doesn't really care about what the attorney general, they, they wanna protect themselves, you know, because of the roads, I get it.
Yeah.
Um, but the township, we can't legally say, now, so far, knock on wood, they have been good about getting.
But now, they approved it, say, let's just assume this was to have happened, and we come back the next meeting, which I wouldn't even happen anyway, because it's not approved yet. The road commission comes back, and he has his approval for the road commission, and it comes to us, can we say no? I would pretty much say, we can't say no, so why, what's the big deal about doing that on contingent, when we can't say no either way? You see what I mean, now, if we had that option, then I'd maybe agree with you, say, okay, maybe, because we might have that option if it came back to us, we don't even have that option. So why not just do a contingent, protect us on our end, it's still contingent, so anything else, it's on, it's on road commission, you know what I mean, like.
And it's in the road commission's hands now, yeah, you're right.
But yeah, most things, I do agree.
See, that is just, see, you're going, I, I'm talking about article twelve, you guys are talking about an, an issue.
We're just talking about a specific issue that would be a, of, that would also.
Okay, I'm talking about article twelve, okay? Now, the thing is, is you're saying contingents, that's the na- everything, okay? Um, so, if it's in contingent, okay, for him to get this, okay, or a person, okay, that you guys cited with contingent, and then it would come to us, and as the board, for approval, okay? With, it's under contingent.
Okay.
It should never come, okay, to our table, okay, or our meeting, until everything is done. That's where I'm getting at.
To me, it doesn't matter, because.
It's not what you think, it's what I'm thinking right now for a second.
That's fine, but you know that.
Hold on a second, let me talk, okay, please, I let you sit there and talk about an issue, I'm talking about, in general, you guys are talking about one, in general, everything, okay? It's to make sure everything is done correctly, okay, because there was times that there's been permits issued, okay, or with stuff that's in contingents and hasn't been done. It's been a proven fact in this township.
And who's fault is that?
Huh?
Who's fault is that?
Okay, that's is why, when the board, it is a yet, but that's why, we don't say, we give the blessing, here you go, you got everything, you just bought yourself a house.
Okay, so what about this situation? Say we have a public hearing, which happened on a lot of the extractions, and some of them want a berm, our ordinance don't call for a berm. A lot of stuff, I mean, certain setbacks, the, the, the driveway was supposed to be off oaky, we, we changed a lot of things.
Okay. See now, now, hold on a second, you're, you're using.
That was on contingent, we approved it being on contingent, that happened that way. Four residents, the benefit.
And because the resident funded it.
Because they wanted it, we have thirty days to approve it or deny it.
Okay. Okay, that's, you approve, you did what now, okay, so berm, we'll just go berm, okay?
Okay.
With contingents, okay?
Yeah.
What was the contingent for?
The residents specifically asked for it, so we.
Okay, so.
So, as a planning commission, we couldn't just make him.
Well, okay, go ahead.
We couldn't just make him change a site plan on the spot, and then he also has, you, when he has a public hearing, he has thirty days to approve it or deny it, that's the reason why they have contingency by law.
Correct. Okay, but then, but that's what I'm saying, once that's changed, okay?
You, you act like you can just keep delaying, you're not understanding, you have thirty days for that public hearing.
No, it's not delaying, nothing, it's, it, it does not, it's not delaying.
He wasted me thirty days to approve one.
He does kinda have a point.
You have thirty days.
You have thirty days, so if, if they do it, if they approve and it comes to us, and we deny it.
Yeah. No, 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 but it shouldn't come to us, it's what I'm getting at, it should not come to us with a contingent, once.
You have three weeks. You're not gonna have time for him to go to get it done and a site plan brought to us by the next Monday, impossible, impossible, so we're gonna have a special hearing.
So, why does it have to be the next week? Because what?
Because it's got to be there, it's.
Because you have thirty days.
Okay, but the thing is, okay, thirty days, so, the thing is, now, what, what happens with the, okay, what, what's the road commission in it, like, right now, we're over thirty days, we're.
So we're gonna state. Because we approved it.
We're not, we, we approved it.
We.
Our hands.
Okay, but, okay, approval with contingents, that's through, that's through you guys, okay?
Exactly.
So the thing is, is, I mean, I see what you're saying about contingent.
They don't get another thirty days when it gets to us, it don't work that way, for the public hearing, you have thirty days to approve it or deny it.
Huh? I, I wanna look into, I, I wanna look into that, you, you, you had, where should I look?
I'd have to look it up, but I did look it up.
Well, you mean, you're the one that's saying it is.
It's in our ordinance, I think it's in our ordinance, it's in our ordinance.
I looked it up twice, it's, it's a state ordinance, it's a state law.
Okay, any further discussion on this, any, any, you got any comments? Comments, anything further?
I, I just know, all I'm gonna say is that we have a seven-member planning commission. That do their due diligence.
I'm not saying they don't, I'm saying the board should have final approval.
I'm not saying they don't either, but my, my point is, is when a supervisor asks them to follow something, you need to follow them, I mean, that's.
Like I said, it, it all stems back to, the applicant should not even be, the application should not be even going to the planning commission.
Exactly.
Until everything's in place, we should not be accepting the application until everything's in place, I have given him a checklist several times, so from now on, and this is my directive to him. Nothing goes to planning commission until I look at it, and then if, if it goes, like I said, without my looking at it, then this board has to do something, we cannot continue like we are.
Yes, I mean, you guys, I mean, you're not completely blaming the planning commission a little bit, because like, our hands are tied, when, when we have our, we're having a public hearing, it should have already, everything should have been in place, like you said.
Correct.
But when it's not, then what, we got.
But that's just my point, I mean, we need to follow who's, who's over, whatever, and, and when the supervisor asks to do something, and multiple members blatantly say, well, I understand what she's saying, but.
There's certain.
We're gonna do it anyway.
That's a little different, I mean, in, in the, in a situation like that, like, now, like I say, if it's like something that could be delayed of ordinance, or most, ninety percent of the stuff that come in front of us, I agree with it, but, w- when all of a sudden, we're just having a public hearing? That's different, like, we already had, we're, we're, we're.
True, that, understood, but seeing that public hearing should have never even been.
Now, I agree with that, but you gotta think, you're already in our shoes, we're already caught off guard, like, what, what do you mean this thing is like six months, like.
True, but again, she's the one that deals with the attorney and, and the cases, so if, that's just my thing.
But at the end of the day, still, but at the end of the day, we would change in that, in that either, if, most things that, when you approve something contingently, yeah, you, you'd probably be able to deny it if they didn't do it.
Right.
But the thing is, it's going to the road commission, we can't deny it when it comes back, like, you know what I mean, so it's like approval only kind of a situation.
Yeah.
So by being contingent, really didn't affect, no matter, any situation, how it could affect the, affected it in a, in a different direction, you know what I mean? Cause if it came back to us, it still would have been approved, we would have had to.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I can see, see you guys that, um.
Yeah. Yeah. I, so I would like, uh, I would like to see what Bonnie would have to do to, uh, to look, look this over, that board does have final approval to, that we do, and I see what.
Bonnie has looked this over.
Okay.
Yeah, she has, she's looked it over, and she's, and her opinion was, some townships do, some townships don't, it's strictly up to the township, it's not illegal not to have article twelve like this.
Hmm.
Um, it's just totally up to township.
I, I would just ask, you know, if, if, however it happens, i- if you guys are going to do something on a contingency because you have no choice, discuss it with her.
Yeah, well, I mean, we kinda got caught right in another.
I, I understand, I understand, but I, I'm just asking a- as a board member, because we all agreed of who to hire, if she's the one that deals with the attorney, you have to converse with her.
Yeah.
Because you guys don't deal with her, you know.
And like I said, it all stems from that desk, at least, and, and I'm working on that problem, it should never, application should never be taken unless you have all the, all the stuff, and there's a checklist that you have. And I told him, do not even accept the application, waiting for them to bring more stuff, don't, just don't, so. But I am going to email him again, and I'll see, see you guys on us, so that we're all on the same page of what we're asking, so that everybody knows what we're asking.
I think, I think, like, I don't think we would have did that if it wasn't that s- specific deal, you know what I mean?
By then, that everybody's hands were tied.
Yeah.
He'd already published it, I, and I didn't see it until it was already published, and then I, I started getting these emails, and I'm thinking, what the heck?
So Anita, that's another thing, if he asked you to publish, make her check with her first. I wouldn't agree with him, I wouldn't say, okay, I'll do it, I wouldn't say nothing until you talk to her.
It's, it's just a matter of even then published.
Just to say you.
I make a motion to approve article twelve as presented, that was reviewed by Bonnie.
Second.
Moved by Pankowski, seconded by Bochant. And like I said, it has to be cleaned up to, anyway, let's do.
Oh, say it.
Yeah, to be cleaned up, like I said, go through, have Bonnie go through, and really go fine tune this, but.
The only thing that she's seen was the planning commission review.
And then, but then, we'll get a, have her get a new copy to us with what it is, old and new, so we can see it, what's getting removed and what's getting added, and.
So you make a motion to accept this, as in?
And then we'll.
With, with, with the cleanup.
With the cleanup.
So you're gonna like an contingent?
What?
Yeah, yeah.
We, and the thing is.
How are you gonna approve something on contingent, huh?
Hey, hey, the thing is, is, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna have to, even, even with it, with this board, okay?
George, I think that's.
We may have to do stuff like that with, with your, and so you're talking about.
All I can tell you is, you're gonna be here a lot later, but we still need to roll call.
Yeah, I can do that, do a roll call.
Supervisor Turner?
No.
Kirkstraw?
No.
Treasurer Bochant? Yes, with what I said. Trustee Howard?
No.
Trustee Pankowski?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay. I would just ask that you guys follow up, like.
No, I, I, no, I have to go through it.
I appreciate it.
I actually add everybody on the evening, and I send out, send it out again, just to be sure. Consultant, can you guys put, table this from last meeting? Um, she's estimating thirty hours at a hundred and sixty-five dollars, so it's four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And just wanna let everybody know that I've been working on this, um, B S and A, I've pulled all the bank statements, I've got everything ready, I've been making corrections, seeing what's needs to be corrected, so it should not take her very long.
Just do not, because we're fixing whatever she asks treasury to fix?
Yeah, and she's gonna show me what to do, you know, so. Hopefully, it won't take her thirty hours, I, I've, printed it off, I wrote all the notes in it, what needs to be changed, needs to be fixed, that I'm aware of, um, of course, she has words, because I do, but. The treasury's already fixed our burden. So, that's it, thirty hours, up to thirty hours at four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and she's got from April first to present day to fix. I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to hire a consultant for up to thirty hours, they're rated a hundred and sixty-five an hour, up to forty, four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. My stroke, second by Howard, is doing a roll call, please. Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Burke Stroud, yes, Treasurer Bochant?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Bighouse?
Yes.
I have a question at the last meeting, did she say when she could start, or?
Yeah, actually, she did, yes, the ten, December tenth, over here.
Uh.
Yeah. Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't work, we can then go over. B S N A cloud, um, you guys asked me to do some further, um, questioning. They told me that it's a year, year-to-year contract, um, they do not, eventually are not gonna be supporting the dot net. It's mainly going to be, um, the cloud, and I've been using the cloud with the fire department, and it's awesome, it is so much better than what we got.
So when, when is our contract up, with the current B S N A?
That I don't know.
I don't, I don't even know where that's at.
And this will be done early anyway, because.
We don't, we don't, we don't do this for another three years.
Yes.
We don't have one, it's probably only three, so we. This contract is three years?
No, I don't know where our contract is, but we have to, we have to initiate the cloud within three years.
Well, see, that's what I was wondering.
I can find out when it is.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
And it's in three installments, the first one will be nine thousand nine hundred, once we sign the, um, agreement, the second payment would be thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety, once the. Subscription start date is set up, and then the third payment will be nine thousand nine hundred, once completion of upgrade, and this doesn't require training, and. With the B S N A cloud, it's A I generated, so all you gotta do is type a little question, and that tells you how to do it, walks you right through it, and it's, I love it. I, like I said, I'm using it, because I have to prove the invoices at the fire department, and I can go in and, it's just, I like it, it's easy, any questions you have, so. You really don't, wouldn't need to even, you know, who would be a snake cloud to figure out how to do something like we do now. So that's, total cost would be thirty-three thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, um, annual fee would be thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, I'm not sure what we're paying now. I don't know.
Somebody's, I think it's like twenty-eight.
I don't know what the whole contract is.
It's probably a whole thing.
What's the thirty dollars? So there's another second page, or.
Bonnie had something else? Down here, we can, it's down here.
All down here.
And that includes all the modules that we currently have. I don't have the S N A for this contract, I think we get.
So what do we have to notice about the cloud then, is that what?
Correct, we have all of the modules in dot net, but not in the cloud.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're switching everything to the cloud.
These payments, um, after we do it, what's the monthly or the yearly, what is it?
It is, it's thirteen thousand, annual fee is.
Annual fee is thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety.
So that'd be after we pay the.
No, thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty.
Oh, sorry, three, thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty.
So that'd be after we pay all this, then, and after that, it would just be that?
That's every year, it'll be thirteen four thirty.
Yeah, great, so that's nineteen thousand eight hundred.
Aren't you starting?
Yep.
Down here.
Say what?
Crazy, I said I started another business, this is insane.
I, well, as of right now, I mean, if you call the S N A for assistance, they, in the beginning, when I was first here. You had a real person that you talked to, they remoted in, and they went through, and and told you where to go, and what to do, and how to do it, now. You barely get a person, and if you do, they say, okay, well, we'll send you, um, well, we can't really tell you how to do it, because, um. Your township is different than other townships, we'll send you the list on how to do, or or we'll send you the, um, description on how to do it.
The trouble is.
So they send you a piece of paper, you follow the directions for twenty-five hundred dollars a month, I'm like, I don't wanna follow a piece of paper. But I want you to remote in and show me where to go, I don't wanna do it by myself.
And I had, uh, he sent me what the contract looks like, and I had Bonnie look at it, the only problem that she had was that she hardly suggests that we do a policy. Or a, um, resolution on, um. Passwords, protection, that kinda stuff, just to, because in the, the, um, contract, it says that we're responsible for our employees. So she suggested that we have some kinda resolution dictating what we are expecting.
We have something, I wanna say like, around the blocks, like around the blocks of the building and stuff like that, I thought we had something in place, I just wanted maybe to add that in with it.
I thought we did, I don't know what. I'm gonna look and see what we have.
I thought we did, I could be wrong, I was.
You want, I would get it.
I know I was working on one, I don't know if we ever got it, I think I I worked on it, but I don't think I ever presented it.
Okay, good. Um, do you want to get the, uh, see if you can find what you were working on, and add it to it before we approve this, or?
This, oh, this is just to prove the upgrade, the contract, I just did it as as a safety net, you know, I don't sign any contracts without her looking in. So that that's all, the only thing she had was that she hardly suggested that we do, so if if we do agree and and we do the upgrade before I sign the contract, I'll make sure I get that in place. So we have some type of policy or resolution, it should, probably should be a resolution, so a policy, but I'll make sure that I have something in place, I I was thinking I did.
Any of you work on it, I don't have to remember.
Yes, I can't remember if I did or not, but I'll I'll look, if not, I'll have it for the next meeting, so that we can at least get approved.
So what we're supposed to be approving is the nineteen thousand eight hundred?
Um, no, we'd have to prove the whole office in two payments, the thirty-three thousand two hundred and thirty, and then it's in three payments, that would be the total.
And then you go live, I mean?
Yeah, by the third payment will be live. And she says it could be six months to a year before we could even get it.
I was gonna say, I don't wanna do this in the middle of my tax season, this don't add anymore to me right now.
It might be another. Yeah, I mean, and and we could probably tell them that, hey, this, we pull off and do it if.
Oh, please, I would agree with you.
But like I said, we we should, could get it started, you know, like I said, with the first payment, um, that'll put us on the list, um.
So if it don't get activated though, and we're paying, um, how's that work?
The first payment will be when we sign the agreement, the nine thousand nine hundred, second payment will be invoiced on the subscription start grade for the upgrade modules, when we start upgrading the modules and stuff, it's the second payment. Third payment's when we go live. So it may be.
Want to make sure it's all paid a hundred percent before you actually use it then?
Yeah.
And do they remotely go in, like, if you have any problems, or they like, can you share your screen with them and do that?
Well, this is all A I, so you don't, you, all you gotta do is type in, how do you do this?
A I, it's all.
Just better than like that.
You just ask Google basically.
I don't think so, you ask A I the question, and they tell you how to do it.
Yeah, you just.
You know, like, you know, back in the day, you used to ask a question, like, hey, what what about this, you know, and some person, it should be a person typing it, but this is actually, with A I, drops you right to where it needs to go.
It just, yeah.
Like, this, this is what you need to do, da-da-da-da.
Oh, I see.
I just tested it because I, I thought, I'm gonna see how this works, I just typed in something, and it popped it up, and then it showed videos, if you wanna watch videos, it shows you how to do it by video, or.
Oh, that's pretty cool, oh, and you're already using it because of the fire department.
You don't get a personal. I'm using it with the fire department.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't know much about it, but I had one day training, um, it was pretty easy, it's actually a lot easier than what we're using now, more simplified, I think.
And how much do you say you pay now, or you don't?
I think it's twenty-five hundred every other month.
Every month?
Twenty-five hundred, yeah, every other month, no, I think it's.
That'd be a lot, that'd be a lot.
Is it borderline, you wanna go low?
I wanna say it's like twenty-eight thousand a year, somewhere in there, that's that's right there, it's twenty-two to twenty-eight thousand, it's up there.
But this ain't a.
So you say that every year, it's up there.
This is only thirteen thousand.
Well, yeah, because they took out the people.
So it's actually cheaper?
They took out the people!
I don't think it's actually cheaper, but it's, it's, I don't know, we're gonna have to look, I'm not sure what, what we're paying now.
It feels like.
It seems like it's every year, though, I don't think it's.
I don't know, I can run and grab the folder, we might.
We might. Just so we.
This, this, it feels like we just, um, but, when I upgrade, it's like twenty-eight thousand dollars with the year of something.
We upgraded the, uh, to do the credit card thing, swiping, um, we upgraded to that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And when there was, that was a latest update, I think. I remember, right? Cause people can go on B S N A now and pay their taxes too, right?
It's right on our website.
Okay, and it's through B S N A?
Mm-hmm, yep, the link is right on our website.
So I think we upgraded that.
So the cloud looks a lot different than like just, um, just A I, and then like, maybe it saves it, so you don't.
Yes, you don't lose anything, or, yeah, it it lists on here, if you go further back.
Some of those data centers need.
Stop, it tells you where all the changes are.
It's true, though.
If you look at that changes, it lists all the changes.
Okay. I mean, I, that's up to you, I mean, if you guys think it's gonna help, I mean, I'm not worried with it, I.
It is kinda cool, cause you can do page to page, like, I could be in general fund, and I can be in, uh, accounts payable, and have it on the same.
Yeah.
And I could, instead of, you know, have, right now, we have to click on one, I mean, I have to click on the other one, this, it's a do, like, do a thing.
Okay, so May ninth, there was remote ledger account payable, we, uh, yeah, receiving eleven hundred, and, um, July seventeenth. There was assessing system and service community development building system, um, building was, uh, one thousand fifty-four dollars, both of them were. Uh, one thousand fifty-four dollars, one was for assessing, one's for building, and then October sixteenth, general ledger budgeting and accounts payable. Special assessment tax system, that was Plan two ninety-four. That's what we paid, since I have it here, I don't know what, when, trying to.
So.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm working on it, I don't know.
Okay. So roughly, it's just, these three is is a little over six thousand.
It's about six thousand a year, but.
When was the first, well, that was just from what, since May?
Since May.
Oh, so it's not much of a difference, so, probably.
I wouldn't think so.
Well, we're gonna have to do it anyways.
It sounds like, I mean, they, I mean, they're, I mean.
Within three, within three years, they're not gonna support our dot net, it took, the next, we're gonna get a know-how.
Unfortunately, it is.
Right.
Well, they're gonna have to actually switch it away, yeah.
So we can still use it, but we won't be able to answer any questions about it.
Oh, it's.
I know when the fire department, they, it took them about eight months to get, um, um, getting it, get it in.
Oh, yeah.
About eight months from the time they signed the contract. So.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, do this, but I'm asking not to do it until my tax will be done, please.
Second.
Moved by Bochant, second by, um, Kinkowski, let's do the roll call, please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Burke Stroud, yes, Treasurer Bochant?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Bighouse?
Yes.
Number five, digital bids, we got two bids in, one was for precision irrigation, everyone has currently did it for the last three years. Um, the twenty-twenty-six, the quote is twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty, twenty-twenty-seven would be twenty-three thousand five twenty-five, twenty-twenty-eight would be twenty-three thousand five twenty-five. And then the second bid, um, would be thirty-four thousand five hundred per year, total cost of a hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars for the three years. And that's from Robert DeWitt.
The, uh, let's see. Um, cause precision did it the last three years, right?
And I've gotten multiple compliments on them.
I have two, I have good complaints.
I make a motion to approve precision irrigation and lawn care for a three-year contract, uh, first year twenty-six, I'm twenty-two, uh, six twenty, twenty-seven year, twenty-three, five twenty-five. Twenty-eight, another year, twenty-three, five twenty-five.
Second. Moved by Kinkowski, second by Bochant, roll call, please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Burke Stroud, yes, Treasurer Bochant?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Yeah, Trustee Bighouse?
Yes.
Number six, non-moleable bids, I've only gotten one, were you gonna put one in?
I did, I just emailed it before I got here.
Email it to me?
Yeah.
I've gotten a little bit of thoughts about that, but it's the same. I don't get it so fast. So this is a four to five, with a twenty-foot reach, that's what we ate, so this is farther, this is what we need, because, oh, no, we're here.
I'll be doing worse than that, sorry, guys.
Yeah, I don't know.
Right to the first one.
On secondary roads, right?
I don't know.
Those people cutting, actually.
They both say contour.
Count eight foot.
They both say.
Farmers that cut their, they couldn't see out the ditch.
Yep, yep.
That's the one, I guess.
Oh, no, that was real bad.
I know. It was horrible.
Yeah, I had to cut my neighbors with our tractor, and couldn't see to get out.
Yeah. I know, she'd say, wow, we're cut all the way down, like, you're doing such, you know, and say, oh, wait, Sherman, to.
I have a stragway.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we know inflation, we had to figure out, yeah, we figured five percent inflation, yeah.
Yeah, right?
These three years, yeah, sometimes I'll do the first year, it's like the same, usually, usually it goes definitely.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We've got towns road, is this for the cemetery?
Yeah.
It should be pipe road.
Yeah, I, it was a miscommunication of trying to, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you are, are providing.
I know it's that, that's where my dad is.
Yeah. Yeah, blood.
I should go to.
Oh, oh, it is.
One's for the cemetery, one's for.
Oh, oh, oh.
I didn't know if they needed to be separate or not, so.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Sorry, missed it, I didn't see it. Okay, so instead of town, that's. Okay, we've got two bids for snow plowings, first one's from the Voice Lawn Care, um, doesn't have any, okay, it doesn't have a cemetery, I'm sorry. Because it's five hundred and sixty dollars per plow, for the cemetery and the hall. Um, and you did yours by hour, um, it's a hundred and fifteen dollars per hour for both, the cemetery and the driveway, can you say about how many hours it takes you to do it?
An hour, to do all, with the salting and the shoveling.
At each place?
Yeah, per each, it'd be two hours, yeah.
So be two hours.
As I say, I was here yesterday when you guys were here, and he didn't take their, at all, he hasn't.
Yeah, I, I can pretty much do it, my is closed anywhere, I just gotta listen for the gravel, like, literally.
Um, his is, his is by per plow, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Oh, okay.
And then hers is, um, approximately two hours, so it'd be about two hundred and twenty dollars per plow.
So, but, um, the hourly, I see that you have per hour, but then also I see that they inches, um.
It's just like, it's just a stipulation on, like, if it's heavy or thick, like, it's gonna take me longer, so it's just giving you like a rough, like.
So, so you're. So the one fifteen would be based off of, cause it says one to three inches, at one seventy-five, but it says per hour, one fifteen, I thought you said it takes about an hour each time?
Yeah.
So it'd be the one fifteen or the one seventy-five?
It'd be the one fifteen.
So the, these numbers that you gave us are just kinda giving us an estimate of what. So the, these numbers that you gave us are just kinda giving us an estimate of what it would be if it took you longer?
Yeah.
So you did both of them? Like on average, I mean.
Say, say two and a half hours.
It would be two twenty per plow. Roughly?
An hour each one, right?
Roughly, two, yeah, two twenty per plow. Where was there, there was two five sixty.
Two thirty, it'd be two thirty thirty.
Four dollars.
Oh, yeah, sorry, two thirty. Now, is that the plowing, well, okay, this, I see the gravel.
Plowing, salting, and the shoveling here in the building.
Part of the, yeah, I see that. Yeah, I guess we don't have to do the cemetery again.
Yeah.
That's just.
Yeah, and she, even on the contracts, was, she was pretty, you know, come up and do it, yeah, after four.
Yeah, I just knew that dad always sent me, anytime he's noticed, get down to the township, stop by the cemetery.
So, so.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve uh, hot water change. A hundred and fifteen dollars per hour. In my motion, I would also like, because this young lady did some plow, our contract, we didn't have, pay uh, back there for the last uh, first plow that she came in with.
Oh, you've done that one?
Yeah, I'm gonna send you the invoice, you told me to send you an invoice, I'm just trying to figure out the paperwork.
I feel that, I feel that.
That's what I told her, yeah. She come in.
We got more snow than we normally get.
We, we didn't know who plowed it at first.
Yeah.
We called a couple people and then you walked in and you were like, I did.
That's what I told her, send me an invoice, I can't expect you to plow for me.
I feel.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I feel too, like, any, any contract that falls short, if we didn't do it, it's a, an oddball thing, the previous contractor did. I feel that we should do it.
That's only, that's only complaint, see, as long as you know big complaints, yeah, I mean, I.
I'll second that, and I'll agree with um, paying her for um, plowing without.
Yeah, and she, and Thursday she jumped in, cause I was here Thursday and she, when she came in and she went and took care of the cemetery.
Yeah.
Because we were having a service today and.
Yeah, I stopped by there again and they had cleared it before I got there, after I left here.
Yeah, my hus- I had my husband do it, cause I didn't wanna bother you on Sunday.
Oh, did he?
Supervisor.
I'm still, I'm just right there, we just sat there and chatted.
Treasurer Bochant?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Van Kasten?
Yes.
London Township recreational fine time ordinance amendments. Um, did he get the good copy, so, looks like he did. I think the only thing major that they were changing was the um. Travel routes has to be submitted in writing to the local commission and township. And supervisor not less than fifteen days prior to the date of public hearing. And it's, and they did take out the road commissions, so it's no, no kind of restrictions. Am I right there?
It's been a while.
So what?
And because this is an amendment, it has to start with thirty dash, because it's in the.
So in what?
Thirty dash.
Thirty dash, because it's in the current zoning ordinance, okay. Technically, it's a third, just for section. Any comments, concerns about this? So basically it's stating that they have to apply for a hall route. And then fifteen, fifteen days prior to the public hearing.
See, that's what we're talking about.
Is that leveraging that, like hundred percent?
That's what, but that's.
See, that's for, yeah, but, but, did you hear, see where it says though, it's fifteen days before, you have to apply before, so that.
That's for the hall route, yes, so that they have time to get it in the public hearing.
Yeah.
We never had that in.
You, you see, you think that that should be, right, I feel that that should be, like, right away, like, like you.
Well, the thing is, they're saying. No, no, it is, because you have, they have to have the hall route, they're supposed to give to the zoning administrator fifteen days prior to it, right?
That's not right, yeah, that's not right, yeah.
So, before it comes to us, before the public hearing, the hall route is supposed to be.
Supposed to be in there.
Yes. But then why, because if you come to a public hearing and the hall route ain't in there, you see what I'm saying?
So you guys, you guys want proof that they have.
So, no, this is right, but yes, you see what I mean, see what I mean?
Should it be, maybe, or?
I mean, to me, as long as it's in there before it gets to us, like what Benny said, that's fine, but when, but when you're already having a public hearing.
Yeah.
And we, we missed a step, this is our fault, that's what I was getting at, it's our fault, so, that, that's kinda what I, you know what I mean, like, that's what the big thing is.
You're just driving.
It, it, it should've been in there, and it wasn't, so, it's hard to penalize somebody else for.
No, I get that, no, I, I see that, I see that for that.
Yeah, no, that's why, that's why I said.
That, exactly, yeah, a hundred percent, I'm, I'm bored with that, that's a hundred percent true.
And that's why I agree with the way that's written, making sure it says fifteen days prior also, you know, I mean, that's, as long as we have it before the public hearing, I think that's fine, you know?
There again, it shouldn't take.
Not having it is a problem.
You shouldn't even be taking the application without everything, you know that. So. I'll make a motion to approve London Township zoning ordinance amendment. And I'm gonna give it ordinance number three zero dash twelve.
Three.
Just to get eight, eight.
Three dash twelve, dash eight.
Eight dash. Thirty, thirty dash twelve, dash eight, dash twenty-five.
Uh, uh, uh. Twenty, twenty-five, or just twenty-five?
Just twenty-five.
That would probably be here. Now, the data, but they have adoption, would that be the thirty days after publication?
Correct, you have to publish this within um. No, you have to publish it like right away, you have to.
Right, right, but it, it's to be adopted, it needs to be the thirty days after publication, yeah.
You jumped, you jumped ahead one.
Did I?
Yeah.
Very good.
Red racial time.
So we're now done.
Cause this is actually.
No, this was, no, 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 this was the right one.
Yeah, fine.
The one right here, the front one.
You got the long one.
One up front.
I was like, I'm looking over, I'm like, okay, this all looks good, okay, what about this number?
So when do we write the adoption date out? It would be thirty days after publication, and then I'll have it in the paper hopefully by the, hopefully by Friday, Saturday, open in the morning. Get it published. Should we just wait for that?
No, I think it goes in right now, or, we, we, we write our date.
I, I don't know.
It starts as of today, so.
Well.
So make it finalized.
The original ordinance number though is the five point six oh five.
Right.
But downward says amendment number, that's where we wanna put the thirty dash twelve, eight dash twenty-five.
Right. Okay.
So that we know that it was amended on that day.
Okay.
But the original ordinance number.
Right.
Be the five point six oh five, I think, I think you have to have thirty in front of that too.
Okay.
But we only put on our adoption. Thirty dash twelve, dash eight, dash twenty-five.
Yeah, that goes into section one. Okay. Okay, I make a motion to, okay, so we got a second, move by Turner, second by Howard Allen Faber, I propose.
I'll second that.
Alright.
Now, extraction is exactly the same thing, um.
Great. There's a little more on this one than there was that last one.
So that one would be amendment number thirty dash twelve, dash eight, dash twenty-five, dash two. Or one.
Okay. One?
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah, thirty dash one, one, dash twenty-five, dash one.
And then the original ones would be thirty dash five point six oh four. Date of adoption would be twelve eighth. I'll make a motion to approve the extraction operation amendment. I'll second. Move by Turner, second by Strahm, all in favor, I, I propose, motion carries. New business dates, how would they close? Um, hopefully I got them all right, I went over several times, make sure I got them right. Planning commission, uh, meeting dates, and meeting starts at seven thirty, would be January fifth, February second, March second, April sixth, May fourth, June first, July sixth, August third. Um, September eighth, which would be on a Tuesday, because Monday's the holiday, Labor Day, October fifth, November second, and December seventh. Word trustee meetings are the second Monday of the month, meeting at seven thirty, January twelfth, February ninth, March ninth, April thirteenth, May eleventh, June eighth, July thirteenth, August first, September fourteenth, October twelfth, which is Columbus Day, unless everybody's got a, a Columbia on that day, I have no problem with it. November ninth and December fourteenth. While the holidays will be observed and offices are closed, New Year's Day, President's Day, Juneteenth, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, M L K Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Veterans Day, day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day.
So there was, we can add it, Easter Monday?
What?
That's not a federal holiday.
Well, the uh, cause the day after Thanksgiving. I don't know, just throwing.
We're all in comas that day.
Huh?
We're all, we're all in food comas that day.
Same with Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, what Easter you mean?
Well, no, yeah, 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 well, that's what I'm saying, the day after Thanksgiving's out here too, well, that's why I, I, I think something changed, I heard it, I think. Cause I just, I looked it up and it's, it's in my phone, too.
Why is your day after Thanksgiving on here?
Easter Monday, I think the city has a section, what you went to that.
The day after Thanksgiving?
No, Easter.
Why, why do we have, have all the day after Thanksgiving?
I don't know, I.
I, I, I.
What is it, day after what day?
It's, the same thing that they did for this, I'm just throwing it out there.
Day after Easter? Monday.
It says no Easter Monday, it's not a federal holiday.
Okay. But day after Thanksgiving is?
I don't think so.
I don't know, it's not everybody takes off.
No, it's just Black Friday, that's all.
Yeah, it's Black Friday, yeah, there's actually a lot of people there.
Well, I'm just saying, I thought I heard something that, like. Then, then I looked it in my phone, like.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a federal holiday, that day after Thanksgiving, I don't know what, who put it on there, when it was put on there. That's, that's uh, according to our resolution, that's because we observed it on.
Oh, my bad.
That was a long time ago, it was like five years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while, it's been a while. I mean, we can add Easter Monday if you guys want to, I don't care.
But it's not a federal holiday. Yeah, no, I, I make a motion to accept the dates and holiday orders.
Cause it, it's like, it's like the start of like, cause.
I'll second.
Move by Bochant, second by Strahm to approve the meeting dates and holidays. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I propose, motion carries. Supervisor appointments, I don't have a whole lot this year, um, planning commission, I move to reappoint Amy Hirsch. Um, on the zoning board.
You guys don't have, you don't have them? Oh, we don't, okay, okay.
Uh.
Okay.
Um, C B A, uh, would be Darryl Nichols and Mark Ganger.
So, you're doing Amy what?
Hirsch.
For?
Reappoint for P C.
Oh, P C. And then, so that's per hour?
It would be a three-year term.
I'm sure, well, three years, not one year. Everything's three years?
No, staggered, no staggered.
Most of them have, but, I'm sorry, I should make it clear, planning commission for three year, I want to reappoint Amy Hirsch, which expired twelve thirty-one and twenty-five. She would move to twelve thirty-one and twenty-eight. Um, C B A is a three-year term, I want to reappoint Darryl Nichols and Mark Ganger, both expire twelve thirty-one and twenty-five, so that would be twelve thirty-one and twenty-eight. And then the only other one I have that expired is building board review, John Tackett, that's a three-year, his expired twelve thirty-one and twenty-five, so it'd be twelve thirty-one, uh, twenty-eight.
So, the building was.
All of it.
All, every, all three of these are three years, okay.
And that's the only ones that expired this year. I'll double check to be sure.
I'll make a motion to accept the supervisor appointments as noted.
I'll second that.
Move by Bochant, seconded by Howard Allen Faber.
Aye.
I propose, motion carries. West Shore quote, we had one of our, uh, s- sirens that had needs repaired.
Of course.
That wasn't covered under the grant. And the total amount, two thousand two hundred and fifty-two thousand eighty-eight cents.
Which one was?
Um, let's see. Hoffman, London Township Hoffman though. Motherboard, right. And I just got the um, renewal contracts for maintenance, I'll forget on next month, we just got it to you today. I don't know.
It's still at the end of, the little, uh. It's still at the end by the cemetery. On the opposite side.
We've got a total of three, right, we got one here, four.
Four?
One by the driveway.
Bike road, wire. Well, we got to go one.
Yeah, we have four.
I'll make a motion to approve the west shore services.
I'll second that.
And the amount, the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
I'll still second that. Sorry, I got it in myself.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Director, yes, Treasurer Bochant? Yes, safely, please, I'm hopeful. Trustee Howard.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay, trustee.
Yeah, I get tired of.
I know. Yes, Trustee Van Kasten?
Yes.
Alright.
Attorney costs, I got a, a letter from a, um, attorney bonding, she wants to raise her hourly rate by five dollars, we are being one sixty now, she wants to go to one sixty-five.
Make a motion to accept a five dollar raise for bonding.
I second that.
To one six, to one sixty-five, an hour?
Yeah. I did, move by Kinkowski, second by Turner, all in roll call, please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Treasurer, yes, Trustee Bochant? Treasurer Bochant?
Yes.
Yes.
Why do you call it trustee?
I should say, uh, tre- treasurer Howard, but trustee Howard?
Yeah, yes.
Trustee Van Kasten?
Yes.
Okay, number five, plank rose, clean up quotes. Uh, she had the email, and it says, I recommend Despro as the lowest responsible bidder. Note that their quote also includes cross cutting and removal for two K, whether itemized, posted vehicle, or virtual or less, and the team vet knows my items. One was Despro, total cost of six thousand dollars, the other is Versa Pro, total cost of five thousand.
One, three, one, eight, oh, one.
Now, this is one, three, two, two plank, one's gotta be put on there.
It's the ne- it's the next.
You mean one?
Go to the next.
To the next one.
Two.
Yeah.
Also this.
This one I didn't have, just.
No, no.
This was the one.
That one, that one, no.
Or do that one?
No, what about this one, Darryl, the whole, that, whole panel was together?
Oh.
This one.
Oh, oh, okay.
I thought those were.
Cause Versa Pro, we did Versa Pro the last time, right?
I think we used. Versa Pro did the ram's robe, I think that there was a.
Yeah.
For, what is this?
One, or plank rose, one, three, two, two, two plank.
Or one, three, two, two, two plank, and there's a stash.
I don't know, there's so much in there.
It shows up here, thousand, on the email.
Yeah, it does, on a logwood?
Yeah, so I'm not sure. That's, that's not right.
Yeah.
Well, like.
And that's what's.
Was that email saying that it was getting quotes right here?
He's got one. That's this one.
Yeah, which one?
Uh, up top here is got, oh, it must be on a corner of Plank and Townsend, maybe?
Yeah, but I'm here, it just says.
Of a, the Townsend.
With the name of.
This is Logwoods, yeah.
These are the two trailers that are on Logwood.
Right, so that wouldn't be it, so I don't know what the one, three, two, two, two plank is. I don't either.
Alright.
Table one.
Make a motion to table this, we get some orders.
Okay, table.
I think he's got it, that's so. Let's pop in. I'll make a motion to table. Move by Kinkowski, I'll second it. Move by Turner, second by Kinkowski, and move by Kinkowski, second by Turner, to table. All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Motion carries, second citizen's turn. None, word trustee Darryl.
I don't have any.
More sense.
Um, I actually have one thing.
Um, I actually have one thing. The driveway, um, came in and brought their schedule. Um, they plan on starting the twenty twenty-six schedule on April third. Which is a Saturday. And they're going to go through weather permitting. October twenty-eighth, which is a Wednesday. Um, if anyone has any questions, I have the schedule, uh, at the township at my desk.
Do you know if they're gonna go in front of planning commission? Maybe yearly, give that schedule to the planning commission?
I'm not sure. The gentleman that came in was just one of the, um, main guys there. He was not the owner. Or any of the other people?
Does he have a name?
I did not. I gotta contact him and ask him. He didn't give me a name or offer a card or anything. He just said, hey, I'm supposed to drop this off. I'm, I know.
Cause usually they go every year in front of the, the planning commission.
Well, at least the, the new, I don't know about the previous ones. I don't think so. Not, I mean, wait, wait, previous ones.
Right. They have a number.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
I'm sure Johnny would. I'm sure Johnny would.
Do you have a contact form? Did you find out? Let me know.
Are you, he's being like a buff guy, short, dark hair? That's a red one. Yeah, that's a red one.
This email might.
Yeah, he'd be, uh, track manager.
Yeah, I would never.
One of you guys could get a hold of them, you just find out. Okay, anything else? Yeah, mine.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Oh, Merry Christmas, everyone. He, karma's twice. And Happy New Year.
I, 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 I would wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Nice.
There you go. The same, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Same for me, um.
Same for me?
I will be out of the office the first week of January. I will be on cruise. Um, so, I will be back in fact for the meeting though, but I will not be in that first, uh, week of January. I'm on a Thursday, so just wanted to let everybody know. Um, that's it. I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine oh three.
Okay.
Move by Turner, seconded by Bochant, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Supervisor carries.
You ready?